Good afternoon. I'll call to order the August 27th meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Ellison, Schrader, Sweetsie, Colgill, and Rockwell. First item in business today is to approve the actions from the August 13th meeting. Commissioners may have a motion to approve those actions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Next, we will sort through the agenda, determine which items will be considered on consent, which we will discuss, and which will be continued to another meeting. You can find hard copies of the agenda in the hallway. So, starting at the top, item one is the Good Grocer Registered Land Survey, 2644 Nicolet Avenue. That is a registered land survey. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item one? See, no one will put that on consent. Item two is Mosaic Phase Three at 1320 and 1350 Lagoon Avenue, 2900 Fremont Avenue South. That item will be continued to the September 17th meeting. Item three is a tobacco shop at 2606 Penn Avenue North, rezoning and conditional use permit for a shopping center. We'll discuss item three. Item four is at 3215 33rd Avenue South. That's a rezoning. We'll discuss item four. Finally, item five is the 701 Central Apartments at 701 through 705 Central Avenue Northeast. Several applications for a new multifamily building at that location. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item five? See, no one will put that on consent. So, our agenda as amended is as follows. Items one and five will be on consent. We'll discuss items three and four, and item two will be continued to September 17th. May have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Next, we will move on to our committee of the whole consent agenda, and at the August 16th meeting, we considered some land acquisitions related to the Emergency Stabilization Pilot Program, also a land sale at 3950 Thomas Avenue North. We found that those items were consistent with the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth. And Commissioners may have a motion to find those two items consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Next, may have a motion to continue item two to the September 17th meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our public hearings, and at this time, I'll open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. Again, that's items one and five. Is anyone wishing to speak on any of tho—either of those items? See, no one. I'll close the public hearing and may have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our items for discussion. We'll start with item three. That's at 2606 Penn Avenue North. Staff is Ms. Rouse.
Good evening, members of the Commission. This request is a petition to rezone the property from C1 to C2 to allow a tobacco shop and for a conditional use permit to allow a shopping center at this location. It's located at the intersection of 26th Avenue and Penn Avenue North, surrounded mainly by single-family dwellings, zoned R1A. There is an apartment complex, zoned R5, kitty-corner to it. The existing site plan, they do have extensive landscaping. It is a automobile convenience facility that is nonconform—or existing nonconforming. Staff has found that the proposed rezoning from C1 to C2 is not supported by the comprehensive plan or the West Broadway Alive Plan. Penn Avenue North is a community corridor, not a commercial corridor, and the West Broadway Alive Plan focuses the more intensive zoning districts at nodes like Penn and Broadway, not further into the neighborhoods, that it's the—in the sole interest of the property owner, and the existing property and zoning classifications adjacent to the site are not compatible with the C2 zoning, and that there is reasonable use of the property with the current C1 zoning. Staff does find that they propose COP for a shopping center would be—would not be a detriment or a danger to the public or impede the enjoyment of use of adjacent property, and that there are adequate facilities provided and no additional traffic congestion is likely to result from the conditional use permit. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Right. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Rockwell.
One of our findings on the rezoning that we're asked to consider is whether it's been a change in character, trend of development in the area. I'm just wondering, how does the BRT fit into this? You know, we've had that come up in a number of other Penn Avenue discussions.
This area is not within one of those small-area plans, so it wasn't analyzed as part of this. I don't know that because of it, there's been much of a change in this specific area.
But the BRT does go up to and past 26th. Is that correct, the planned BRT?
Yes.
Yes. So, okay. So, there is some policy guidance in the comp plan related to increased density, well, maybe not commercial density near transit lines. Cool.
All right. Any further questions of staff? If there are none, I'll open the public hearing on this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first, if someone is here, on behalf of the applicant. And please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
2606.
Yes. Yep. Please, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, and let us know if you have anything else to add.
Yes, that's—I own the 2606 Penn Avenue, and we'd like to, you know, open like a different company. We have space at the—our location, and we'd like to, like what she said, from C1 to C2, to be able to open a tobacco shop. We have like separate private entrances with that place, and everything is going to be private and protected and everything. So, we would like your permission to approve it if it's possible, and I don't know what else to say. This is my first time. It's like—
All right. And are there any questions of the applicant? If there are none, we can see if anyone else would like to speak on this item. Is there anyone else here to speak on item three? And seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, we have the two applications before us, the rezoning followed by the conditional use permit. Commissioner Rockwell.
Sure. I have another question for staff, for you, Stephanie, which is, do we know what the—what would be allowed to be built here? I know that there are some use changes, but what physically would be allowed to be built, given the size of the lot, if this were C2?
Yes. There's—on the very end of your packet, there's the rezoning matrix that compares C1 to C2.
Oh, there we go.
So, it's—the same FAR that you could build in either district, same slightly taller building could be built in C2. You can go up to four stories or 56 feet.
Got it. I suppose you're three and 42. Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions, or would someone like to start things off with a motion? Two applications before us. Commissioner Rockwell.
I will start us off with a motion just for discussion and explain some of my thinking. I'm somewhat on the fence, admittedly. So, I will move to rezone the parcel from C1 to C2.
All right. We have a motion to approve the rezoning. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Commissioner Rockwell and Commissioner Schrader.
So, you know, these are always difficult, and we've talked about this before, and I voted both ways on them, depending on the context. I think this context is really on the edge. I, you know, I do think that the presence of Bus Rapid Transit means something. It is—it changes the district a bit. I also looked into the West Broadway rezoning study, which, you know, provides a map of the policy basis for the rezoning. And in that map, there is a light pinkish color assigned to this site, and it's also assigned to a number of sites nearby along Broadway itself between Penn and Logan. When you go to the actual zoning between Penn and Logan, it's primarily C1, but there is C2 there as well. And I don't think it's actually on our map, but I filled out the zoning map online. And so, even the policy basis color in the rezoning study was used to apply both to C1 and C2. Given the policy underlying the ordinance, which is requiring everybody to come here for these rezonings and separate doors, you know, I think that this, given that the use—uses don't change dramatically between C1 and C2, and the allowable height and density don't change at all or change only somewhat, I think that the—that this is appropriate in the area. In addition, because kitty-corner there are R5 and C3A right there as well. So, I can go further into the findings, but I'll let others speak first.
All right. And Commissioner Schrader.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Right now, I'm leaning toward not supporting that. I think that these are—these have been really hard. I know the Commission's, you know, looked to council to see—to answer the bigger policy question, and that—that work is starting. Councilmember Conno has introduced kind of the ordinance to really look at that, but it's not—it's not before us today. Where I land is, you know, we just voted against one in my own—in my ward. I think Commissioner Rockwell makes some great points about the transit and look into how the map is different, but I don't think that that's enough for me. It's very persuasive, but it's just not enough.
All right. Anyone else? Commissioner Ellison.
Mrs. for staff, are there other tobacco shops in the area, or would this be the sole tobacco shop?
I don't know that I can accurately answer that question. I believe there are a few in the area, but all the other rezonings for this similar request along West Broadway in the confines of the West Broadway Alive Plan have been denied.
All right. Anyone else? Commissioner Magrino.
And I'll say, so I'll support the motion. There have been a few of these, and I am a little bit concerned about sort of approving or denying them a little bit haphazardly, but I think in this case, it does matter that, you know, one of the reasons to be a little bit wary of expanding C2 zoning is the potential for auto-oriented uses that, you know, might not necessarily be what we want to encourage along some of these community corridors. And in this particular case, I mean, it's already a kind of drive-up gas station that's mostly asphalt, and so I don't know that we necessarily have that problem here. So, I will be supporting the motion.
All right. And is there any further discussion? And Commissioner Rockwell, I took a few notes on your previous comments, just making some findings in support of this, since it's different from the staff recommendation. So, you addressed finding number one, whether the amendment is consistent with the policies of the comprehensive plan, and suggested that the West Broadway Alive Plan treats this area similarly to other areas that have C2 zoning. Perhaps there's also higher or more intense commercial zoning fairly nearby at the intersection of Broadway and Penn, which isn't too far from here. You also addressed finding number five, that the addition of Bus Rapid Transit to this corridor does in fact change the character, the trend of development in this area, and because of that enhanced service, perhaps the area can support more intense uses that would be allowed by C2. Is there anything else you wanted to add?
No, you know, I think—I think that captures it. I mean, it's—the proximity to other intense uses directly across the street and the—and that BRT coming in, and the fact that the policy guidance for this area, as articulated in the West Broadway rezoning study, has been interpreted to both be C1 and C2.
And I think that actually addresses finding number three to the overall compatibility, the adjacency to other commercial zoning districts. So, if there is no further discussion, we have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning. Clerk, please call the roll.
Colgill.
Aye.
Ellison.
Nay.
Magrino.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Schrader.
No.
Sweetsie.
No.
So, that's four to two.
We think maybe that's three-three. Shall we go through that again?
Sure. Colgill.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
And Sweetsie.
No.
Okay. That is three-three.
All right. So, that's three-three, and I will vote—I'll vote no, and that motion fails. Would someone like to make an alternate motion? Commissioner Sweetsie.
I will move staff recommendation A to deny the petition to—oh, I don't have to do that, do I? Are we—do I have to do that? Okay. I will move staff recommendation A to deny the petition.
So, we have a motion to deny item A, the rezoning. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and I think the findings for this are outlined in the staff report. Perhaps we don't need to really add anything to that unless someone would like to. Seeing no discussion, we have a motion and a second to deny. Clerk, please call the roll.
I promise to count right this time. Coleman? I mean, I'm sorry, Colgill.
Nay.
Ellison.
Aye.
Magrino.
No.
Rockwell.
No.
Schrader.
Aye.
Sweetsie.
Aye.
That's three to three again.
And I will vote aye.
Okay.
And that motion carries. Moving along to item B, the conditional use permit for a shopping center. Someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Sweetsie.
I will move staff recommendation in item B to approve the conditional use permit, subject to the two conditions listed in the staff report.
We have a motion and a second to approve item B, the conditional use permit, with the two stated conditions. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Sweetsie.
Aye.
It's six-zero.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item three. Our next item for discussion is item four, 3215 33rd Avenue South. Staff is Mr. Hanauer.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. So, the proposed rezoning from R1A to R2B for 3215 33rd Avenue is to allow for an accessory dwelling unit in the upper floor of the existing building. There's no exterior changes proposed as part of this project. The surrounding area, as you can see, all R1A within the context of this map. However, staff does want to recognize that the project site is two blocks, or just like a block and a half, south of East Lake Street, and about three-quarters a mile from the Lake Street Station, the light rail station. A map showing—also, that want to recognize that there's nine two-family dwellings within a 350-foot radius, and called out there are 66—66 single-family homes in that—in that area. We have the addendum packet with letters of support, and there is also letters of support of the rezoning from R1A to R2B, likely the most letters of support I've seen for a project like this. There's also a letter of support from the neighborhood organization that references the accessory dwelling unit ordinance as a reason for supporting or being in support of this project and the rezoning. There were no letters of opposition, and just kind of point out the staff recommendation for denial was based on that uniform R1A zoning within that area, and that there wasn't small-area plan guidance that would be supportive of the rezoning. However, like the neighborhood, we do want to recognize the accessory dwelling unit text amendment just a few years ago that would—that wants to see developments like this in most cases, that there are two-family homes around within the area, and that the applicant doesn't. We just had this confirmed with the building plan colleague of mine, that it is likely that no exterior changes would be required to allow for this ADU in that upper floor as the applicant's proposing. So, and the last thing I'll point out, and it's faint, but—and this was noted in the staff report in the last finding, that there was a rezoning from R1A to R2B just two blocks south of the project site on 33rd Avenue. So, with that, I am happy to answer questions that you may have.
All right. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Hearing none, I will open the public hearing for this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first, and please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Both microphones working?
Yep.
Hi. I'm Margaret Miller. I'm the co-owner of 3215 33rd Avenue South, and thank you very much for taking the time to recognize—or to listen to our rezoning proposal. Thank you. We purchased the—and moved into the duplex in 1991, and the duplex was built in 1923. And since it's almost a century old, we've been renovating and maintaining it for 27 years practically nonstop. The renovation of the attic happened in 2001. We were required to get a variance because it is a duplex, not a single-family dwelling, and we applied and were granted that variance. This was a four-month process. And then, we used it as an art studio, and when we retired, we moved up into the attic about a year ago. And our retirement goal is to volunteer at home with refugees and immigrants as English teachers, and we'd also like to volunteer abroad in refugee camps and in third-world countries. And in order to facilitate that goal as retirees, we'd like to rent both duplex units and live in the attic as an ADU. And we have talked to many of our neighbors, and we have come upon no opposition to our ADU proposal, and our neighbors say that they want owner-occupied homes in the neighborhood, which this would facilitate, and they would like higher density to help support our city's infrastructure.
Hi, I'm Janice Roecamp, and I'm the other co-owner of this property at 3215 33rd. As you know, our entire neighborhood is zoned as single-family, although 12% of the immediate neighborhood is two-family dwellings that were built prior to the 1960s rezoning. Both R1A and R2B, as you know, are classifications for low-density neighborhoods. Our proposal does not propose a high-density zoning classification, just a zoning that would reflect how it has been used for 95 years and allow us to legally establish an ADU. We disagree with the analysis portion of the staff report in several areas. I'd like to elaborate on two: consistency with the 2018 Plan—Minnesota—Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth and Benefit to the Public. The first one, consistency. While we're quite new to learning about the land use and housing policies in the current comprehensive plan, there are many of the policies in the plan that appear to be in full support of our proposal. First, for example, the land use policy. Policy 1.8 says preserve stability and diversity while allowing for increased density in order to attract and retain long-term residents. We've lived in our duplex for 27 years, and our tenants are long-term. Policy 1.8.1 promote a range of housing types and residential densities. Even more relevant are the housing policies in that comprehensive plan, and they were only slightly mentioned in the staff report, yet six out of eight appear to be supportive of our proposal. Policy 3.1, grow by increasing the supply of housing. 3.2, support housing density in locations well-connected by transit and close commercial, cultural, and natural amenities. We're close to LRT, bus, and major bicycle corridors, shopping, library, entertainment. We and our tenants routinely bike to work and use public transportation. Policy 3.3, increase housing that is affordable to low and moderate-income households. Our rental units are high-quality two-bedroom units, affordable at 30% of a household income of $45,000. 3.6, foster complete communities by preserving and increasing high-quality housing opportunities suitable for all ages and housing types. 3.7, maintain the quality, safety, and unique character of the city's housing stock. 3.8, preserve and strengthen community livability by enforcing high standards of property management and maintenance. Our Tier One rental licenses indicate a high level of maintenance and safety measures, and we continually work towards environmental sustainability through recent installation of solar, raised-bed garden plots, and here it's recycling for all units and landscaping. The second point of disagreement is whether the amendment is in the public interest and is not solely for the interest of a single-property owner. Of course, the proposal benefits us as property owners. It provides us with the income required to maintain the house at the highest level and to make substantial improvements such as rooftop solar. It also allows us to volunteer abroad as English teachers and keep an affordable base in Minneapolis, where we also volunteer and do house maintenance. However, it also benefits the neighbors, in the environment, the community, and the city. Our neighbors like that we add a few more people in the immediate area to look out for everyone's safety, pets, and packages, and help us shovel in 15 inches of April snow. An ADU would provide additional assurance that the house's owner occupied, something that our neighbors understandably value highly. Extremely positive response in our proposal, as well as the number of signs in support of Minneapolis 2040 in our neighborhood, means our neighbors welcome the kind of housing we provide. The community supports us. Conversations and a letter of support from Longfellow Community Council, as Aaron said, support our proposal, saying it will, quote, "provide another housing option in our community." Our city council member, Cam Gordon, has also expressed strong support for this proposal. The city benefits are, in addition to the fees that the city gets from our rental licenses, we provide quality, affordable housing with no increased development. As evidenced in a duplex two blocks from us that just got rezoned to R2B and added an ADU, this might be a very effective and acceptable way to increase density in single-family zoned neighborhoods. Finally, Minneapolis has changed since the 1960s, when our neighborhood was zoned as R1A, and it has even changed since 2008, when the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth was updated. This is reflected in the 2014 Amendment of Zoning Code to allow ADUs in single-family and two-family dwellings, and the need for a new comprehensive plan now drafted as Minneapolis 2040. Our proposal is consistent with the vision and goals of both of those initiatives. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? Hearing none, we can see if anyone else would like to speak on this item, and would like anyone else? Yes, and please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Aaron Novadvorsky. I live at 3216 33rd Avenue South, right across the street. When Margaret and Janice first talked to us about this, my main concern was that there be owner occupation of the property in its entirety that stays with the property. My understanding of the ADU, it is then stays with the property. Is that correct? If they were to sell, it stays with the property? And that also then says that—and it would always be owner-occupied. Correct?
Aye. That—staff was nodding. That is correct.
So, for us—
So, for us, as owners of single-family dwellings, yes, it's a basically a R1A area, but we've got nonconforming duplexes in the neighborhood anyway. The nonconforming duplexes that we have in the neighborhood run the risk of not having owner occupation. What Margaret and Janice are doing is actually solidifying our neighborhood fabric by having an owner-occupied requirement, but also—
but also getting all of their needs met and the needs of the fabric of the neighborhood. So I am opposed to what the staff's denial of this. And I hope that you vote in support of this zoning change with ADU. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? And please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Lori Barr. I'm 321634th Avenue South. I'm their alley neighbors. And they, you see the picture, their property has always been maintained impeccably. They always have the best tenants. You could not have neighbors as landlords with more integrity than this. And I don't think that there's anybody up and down the block, even though we're not all here, that does not support what they're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you. And is there anyone else who would like to speak? Anyone else? Yes, and please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jan Johnson, and I live at 320833rd Avenue South. And I always look at their beautiful house across there. And they even have a nice birch tree. And I always thought, oh, that just looks like lakefront property, but it's not on the lake, and it looks across at me. And I've lived there since 1994. And I've always appreciated the owner occupancy. And Margaret and Janice and the previous tenants probably lived there for 20 years, and they were in their 70s and 80s. And it was stable housing for them for 20 years. And then they just passed away. Both died within a month of each other. So then the new individuals are, I expect, are probably going to live there forever too because there's great stability. And I used to be a renter. And I always loved being included as a renter in the neighborhood. Let's see. I'm a social worker in Hennepin County, so I see the work of the homeless team for the city and the county. And, you know, you're always trying to preserve inclusivity and trying to make it affordable for all. And the rates of the housing are high. And we're all, you know, paying our taxes to support everybody else along with us. And they've been stellar neighbors. And so I support them.
All right. Thank you. And is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Peter Bergerini. I live at 305522nd Avenue South. I'm on the other side of Hyawath Avenue, so about a mile away. I'm also in support of the applicant to rezone. I think the applicant's made a lot of really good points, probably most of the ones I was going to make. So, good job. But the one thing I want to say is that the staff report is written as if this isn't already a duplex. You know, it talks about how, you know, is this going to impact the character of the neighborhood? Blah, blah, blah. It's already a duplex. It already exists. And the ADU ordinance says that, you know, there's not this like conditional approval process to build an ADU. If the zoning is correct, it's allowed. So, you know, you're not really making this rezoning decision to allow an ADU or not because that's not how the ADU ordinance is written. You're making a decision if this makes sense as R2B. And I think there's been a really good case that it is. And then after that's done, then they're just allowed their ADU, and they don't need to go through this again. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. And is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we just have the one application before us, the rezoning. Are there any further questions? Or would someone like to start things off with a motion? Commissioner Rockwell?
I'm happy to start us off with a motion. I will move approval of the rezoning from R1A to R2B, and I'll articulate findings if I have a second.
And we have a motion to approve the rezoning. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Rockwell?
You know, I think there have been good points made tonight. I also, you know, the comp plan guidance for this area is urban neighborhood, which calls for a range of densities. And in the comp plan, our definition of low density is eight to 20 units an acre. And this site, doing the math, comes out even with three units on the site to less than 20 units an acre. And so, you know, I think that the other housing policies in the comp plan that were cited and land use policies cited by some of the testimony, 3.1, 2.3, 6, and land use policy 1.8, all also support this resounding, but also, I think, just falls within our land use guidance. In terms of whether the amendment is in the public interest, you know, we have increasingly discussed the benefits of walkable communities in the city of Minneapolis from a climate perspective and both from having heat transfer between units and having the ability to not own a car or commute without a car. This certainly in a walkable area, a couple of blocks from Lake Street. In terms of the existing uses of the property and zoning classification, you know, I think the mix of two-family homes, the practical mix of two-family homes and single-family homes in the area, despite the R1 zoning, backs that up. And then whether there are reasonable uses of the property in question, you know, there are. And one of them is a duplex, which is how this was built. And so I think that it's consistent with our plans and our knowledge of what walkable communities do for the greater benefits of the city.
All right. Is there any further discussion? If there is no further discussion, and I think Commissioner Rockwell, you hit most of the findings there. So we have some good context. If there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning. Clerk, please call the roll.
Colgill?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Six, zero.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item four. Also concludes our meeting for today. We have committee the whole this Thursday. Our next meeting is September 17th, and we are adjourned.